All right, before we get started this evening, I was going to see if we could have consistence to move up my mayor's report on the agenda because we do have, I think, both of our potential appointees to our boards tonight are here in the audience and that way they can choose to decide if they want to stick around for the whole meeting, but they can also get out of here if they need to. So I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda and move that to the top.
So moved.
Robin, please call roll.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Loudon.
Yes.
Ryer.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Oh, all right. Yes, now we will go ahead. I did forget the pledge. I'm jumping out of order. So I apologize and I also forgot to call the meeting to order. So I got fixated on one thing. So it is 7:07 PM. We have called this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas. Boltinghouse.
Here.
Loudon.
Present.
Ryer.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
All right, thank you, Robin. So we will now, and I'm sorry I confuse things, we will now go ahead and go to the mayor's report. So for my report tonight, I do have three appointments. We will do our staff appointment at this time as well. So this evening, we will consider an appointment for the position of city treasurer. State statutes require the city to appoint a city treasurer who is qualified elector of Johnson County. Ms. Smith, can you briefly explain the need for this appointment?
Yes, to make our city clerk happy in not being the city treasurer any longer. We do, as the mayor just mentioned, there's a requirement that the city treasurer be a Johnson County elector. And several of us on staff who have served in that position in the past do not currently reside in Johnson County. So our new budget and finance manager, Christine Court, is a Johnson County resident. And so it seems to align nicely with her position. So we would like for the council to consider her appointment as city treasurer.
All right, thank you. Tonight I put before you that Christine Court be appointed city treasurer. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Christine Corthe's city treasurer with a term expiring August 16th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Green.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Ryer.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, and next we will consider two appointments for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. I put before you the appointments of Katie Anderson, Ward One, and Sam Camosa, Ward Two, for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, with terms expiring December 31st, 2024. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointments of Katie Anderson and Sam Camosa to the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, with terms expiring December 31st, 2024.
Second, we have a motion and a second. I would note that Katie and her family and Sam are also in the audience tonight. I don't know if you guys want to wave or stand up and excited to see you here. And so do we have any further council discussion on this topic?
Welcome.
Welcome. All right, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Hi.
Edman.
I'm sorry.
Loudon.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Ryer.
Hi.
Thomas.
All right, and thank you both for stepping up to serve. Next, we do not have any public hearings, special presentations, or issuance of notes and bonds tonight. So we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has four items. Our council committees met on August 2nd and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or the member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopts consent agenda as printed items 4A through 4D.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Ryer.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
All right, next we will move into public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included in our, on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lecture and to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Emily, do we have any online comments? All right, any comments from the public tonight? Yep, Joe, come on up.
Hello, my name is Joe Donaway. I live at 53rd and Outlook in Mission, Kansas. I was hoping that we could get a possibility of some kind of line item style budget before September 6th that the public could view online. If that would be possible, that would be amazing. And I would like to know if Mission is currently losing any money from TIF districts. And are we, when and if are we able to levy fines against the Gateway Project if it becomes blighted? Or if it breaks any of our other codes? I'm aware that it's going through a foreclosure process, but maybe the city can increase its income by levying fines if it's in infringement of any codes. I believe, believe that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move into the planning commission items. We do have two items coming forward from the planning commission this evening. The first is consideration of a preliminary development plan for the residents on Rock Creek Phase Two. Mr. Scott, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Carry out some family stuff tonight, so I give her a night off. This is a preliminary development plan for Phase Two of residents on Rock Creek. The current Phase Two, do you have the cycling, Emily? So the current Phase One of residents in Rock Creek is under construction right now. And that's a 5399 Martway, which is the site of the former Mission Bowl. And now is all we have. Yeah, those are the renderings. I think I gave you the photo metrics. So the developer is now proposing to build a Phase Two on a lot just east of the existing Phase One site. That lot is currently a overflow parking lot for the office building that's on the north side of Martway, which is, we all know that formerly as the Mission Bank Building or the Security Bank Building. And that address is 5201 Johnson Drive. So Sunflower Development is the applicant, the project. They're proposing, as I stated, an apartment building to be located on the site. Apartment building would be five stories in height, four stories of residential on top of a one-story podium structure for parking underneath. There'd be 96 apartment units proposed. Approximately 20% of the units would be two-bedroom with remaining being combination of one-bedroom and studio. That's a photograph of the proposed project or a rendering of the proposed project. The building will have a 1,750-foot square foot retail space on the ground floor in the northwest corner. The applicant kind of visits the space to possibly be a coffee shop or a small cocktail bar. The site is within the Main Street Two zoning district, the MS Two zoning district. And there's a maximum height requirement of three stories or 45 feet and a density restriction of 35 units per acre. So the applicant is requesting a deviation from these two requirements with a building that is five stories in height or 58 feet and 55 units per acre. This is consistent with the deviations that were provided for the Phase One project and provides continuity between the two buildings and that portion of Martway. The site will accommodate 98 parking spaces with seven additional on-street parking spaces for the retail component. Parking requirements for the MS Two stipulates one parking space per bedroom, which equates 112 parking spaces total for the residential component, the 96 units. The applicant is contemplating a cross-access parking agreement with the former Mission Bank Building property on the north side of Martway that would allow for residents to park in the north property in the evening hours and office building users to park in the south property during the day. Obtaining this cross-access agreement is a stipulation of this PDP. In addition, the owner of the north property, the former Mission Bank Building intends to make improvements to the property that'll provide additional parking for that property. The application for the PDP for Phase Two of residents on Rock Creek was considered by the planning commission at the regular meeting on Monday, July 24th. Public was, public hearing was held at that time as part of the consideration. There were no comments from the, from the meeting, from the public. And I neglected to provide minutes in the packets to you all, so I gave the copies that you're there as, I apologize for that. The planning commission approved a recommendation to the city council, the PDP for Phase Two of residents in Rock Creek by a vote of seven to zero. There were two commissioners that were absent. I won't read through it all. There's an ordinance in your packet with 19 stipulations for the project, including the access agreement we spoke of, ADA parking, landscaping, and some other kind of boilerplate language we have in all of our ordinances. And as I said, meant to have a site plan, I sent the wrong document to Emily, but this is a rendering of the proposed Phase Two. Their original proposal was to have a building exactly like Phase One. And we kind of discouraged that because we wanted something that was a little bit different. So a little bit kind of break up that massive building down Martway by having something that complements Phase One, but yet looks a little bit different and kind of stands out and provides a little bit of mix and interest to the, to the eye. So you'll see kind of the same design elements, but the coloring is a little bit different. And then they have this kind of a textured wall on the first level that kind of hides the garage behind it, as well as the landscaping and that curvilinear Rock Creek Trail that kind of continues from Phase One all the way down to what would be a rolling drive. So Mr. Banks Floodman is here tonight from Sunflower Development. Do you have to add Banks?
No, if there's any questions, I'm happy to do that.
Yep, so either one of us are happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for council discussion. Any comments or questions? Yeah, Ken?
Mr. Floodman, I had a question about the staging for the building. I know that you've used the parking to the east for the staging materials for the first phase. What is your plan for the second phase?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that. That's the real answer. I would envision being able to stage on the south portion of that site still, but I don't want to say that and then it doesn't happen. So I, that's a GC question and I'm not sure what we would face. It would have to be most likely within the boundaries of that site because we won't have the luxury of putting it on the current site. We don't want to disturb residents moving in and enjoying their time on Phase One. You're welcome.
Yeah, Leah?
My question is about parking. So do you plan to charge residents for parking within the facility?
We would charge them if they're within the podium structure, so within the secure components of the building. The, the, the surface parking that is behind the building, we would not charge for.
Okay. And then there's proposed parking across the street.
Correct, and that's still what we're working through. I know there's some moving parts with the, the north building and a tenant expanding and how that lays out. So that is, that is a condition that's in there that we would still want to make sure that we work through to accommodate the code when it comes to parking because we do want, we, we want to meet that code.
Yeah, Ben?
So again, I live right behind the, the Phase One and very near Phase Two. So I'm looking at, at the parking situation out there. And Banks, you've heard me talk about this before and I've sort of got checked this with staff. But I'm thinking you've got a little bit of parking scarcity going on. And I'm looking at Martway that's got the center turn lane and, and I'm looking at the Mission Mart that's got a lot of, you know, weeknight pedestrian activity, people crossing the street to get to and from cars. And I'm thinking Martway doesn't look to me like it needs to be two lanes with a center turn lane. It's up for restriping soon, right? So I'm thinking, why, why wouldn't we look at maybe having two travel lanes and some parallel parking along Martway, which would help alleviate some of the parking issues that you see both at the Peanut and with this development? And gives us a chance to shorten the crosswalk distance and, and maybe do some ADA improvements. Ties right into the Rock Creek Trail study that we're doing with planning sustainable places. So I'm just hoping we could, we maybe take a serious look at that, both from the city side and the development side and what we can do to make that just a friendlier place to, to walk around, you know, slow traffic down and ease some of those parking burdens. Hopefully in the long term, maybe you don't have to lean on a, an agreement to cross the street and park cars over there, that sort of thing. So that's my idea and I'd love to hear more consideration about it if we can see it.
I think that sounds great. I mean, the, the walkability component that we're trying to integrate here is that just, that just adds to it, right? I think that, that would create a great atmosphere.
Yeah, well, Ken then Debbie?
In response to your suggestion, I would suggest that we also make sure that the bus system is consulted about that because it may have an impact in terms of the bus traffic in and out of the station.
So council member Choisy alluded to the Rock Creek corridor study that's now underway. We had our first stakeholder meeting last Thursday evening. And we'll have a, it's called a walk and roll on September 16th. We're inviting anybody from the community to come out Saturday morning and either bike or walk along the corridor. And that study is essentially from Woodson all the way to Roland Drive. So it includes this portion of Martway as the Rock Creek Trail. And a component of the study is examining this section of Martway. So those are certainly good ideas to incorporate into the study as kind of a base for any future improvements that are made along that, that stretch. I don't know if there's any immediate plans for restriping, but yeah, we have been kind of looking at. I know Celia, our previous public works director, had actually been thinking about the idea of sidewalks on the north side of Martway, which is challenging given the property and the fact that parking a bus right up to the curb there. But there has been some consideration on staff for improvements in that stretch, so.
Yeah, Debbie?
Just wanted to say Banks was our featured speaker at the Sustainability Commission meeting last Monday and gave us an update on sustainable features of this project. And the commission was extremely encouraged by your comments and the presentation. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I enjoyed being there.
Any other questions?
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, Trent?
Not necessarily in regards to this project, but at some point we talked about changing the term preliminary development agreement. I didn't know if we had ever decided if we were going to keep it or change on that, but.
Yeah, this is, this is a different legal planning term. So this is a preliminary development plan or PDP that's, that's ahead of you. So yes, we are still working on coming up with taking votes on a new name for a pre-development. But this is, so you have, you have preliminary development plan and then
Final development.
A final development plan. And so under the planning statutes, the planning commission, both the planning commission and the council review the PDP. And typically the final development planner FDP is just approved by the planning commission. So this is kind of your opportunity to touch and feel and, and give input and, you know, look at, look at the stipulations that have been put on.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
On my part.
Nope.
I would now entertain a motion on the preliminary development plan for the residents on Rock Creek Phase Two.
Mayor, I move the city council approve a preliminary development plan for Phase Two of residents on Rock Creek, PC case number 2313.
Seven.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Green.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Ryer.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The final item for consideration from the planning commission is approval of the Tobacco Retailer Buffer Regulation zoning code amendment. That's a mouthful. Mr. Scott, will you please provide your report?
Okay, this is an amendment to chapter 400 of the zoning code, the Mission Municipal Code, providing certain stipulations for location of tobacco retailers in the city of Mission. And this was heard at a public hearing before the planning commission on July 24th, at which time public comment was taken. There was no public comment received. So the planning commission went ahead and voted on it seven to zero to approve to the city council. And essentially what this ordinance change will do is provide restrictions on any new tobacco retailer that's moving into the city. And those restrictions are no closer than 1,000 feet to an existing tobacco retailer or to a church, a park, or a school. So those tobacco retailers that are currently in our community are grandfathered in under zoning change. But anybody that applies for a new business license to sell tobacco in our community or has tobacco, tobacco sales as part of their, their product services they offer would be required to be no less than 1,000 feet from existing tobacco retailer or those land uses that I mentioned. So.
All right, thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will open the floor for our council discussion. Yeah, Ken?
Well, I just want to thank all the staff and all the work that's been done on this project. I welcome this new policy and new zoning policy and thank everyone that's been involved in developing it. And I'd like the point of privilege of making the motion.
Sure. Do we have any other questions for staff or anything first? Seeing none, I would now entertain a motion on the zoning code amendments related to tobacco retailer buffer regulations.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the amendment to chapter 400 zoning code of the Mission Municipal Code, providing certain stipulations for the location of tobacco retailers in the city of Mission, PC case 23-14.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Robin, please call roll.
Ryer.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, next we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Reherd, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Finance and Administration Committee met on August 2nd and considered three items. The meeting minutes and a special event permitted for CFD II for Street Solicitation were approved under the consent agenda. The First Amendment for the residents on Rock Creek redevelopment agreement will be considered on the, under the regular agenda this evening. The preliminary development plan for the proposed Mission Bowl Apartments, now residents on Rock Creek Project 5399 Martway, was approved in December of 2020 along with the tax increment financing project plan and the redevelopment agreement. The developers have continuously and diligently pursued work on the project from the outset but have needed to development schedule extensions to date. Both extensions, May 2021 and February 2022, were granted. Recently, the developer advised the city of the need to request an additional extension to adjust the November 1st, 2023 construction completion milestone. A letter outlining the factors contributing to the extension request was also provided. The developer is requesting the completion milestone to be extended to September 1st, 2024. Based on the continuous execution of project work, staff and the city's land use attorney do not believe this request for additional time is unusual or unreasonable. And staff recommends that the city council consider granting an extension of time for completion of construction for the residents on Rock Creek Apartments. The extension would be granted through an amendment to the original redevelopment agreement and will memorialize in one place the previous extensions that were granted and the assignment of the agreement. Mayor, I move the city council approve the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement for the residents on Rock Creek Apartment Project granting an extension of time for completion of construction, the project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this topic? Seeing none, do we have any council member comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Loudon.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Ryer.
Hi.
Motion carries. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Loudon, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, I will. Thank you. The Community Development Committee also met on August 2nd and considered three items. The meeting minutes in our local agreement for 2022 Storm Water System Renewal Project, 2022 Mission Street Repair and Powell Community Center and Mission Square Parking Lot repairs were approved under the consent agenda. No items will be considered under the regular agenda this evening, and that is the conclusion of my report.
Great, thank you. We do not have any unfinished business or new business tonight, therefore we will move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share this time? Yeah, Ken?
I just want to say that we've had a real tragedy in our community with the loss of Jonah, Officer Jonah Oswald. And I just want to make a comment to you, chief, and please carry this to your staff and others in, in the community. We are very proud of the work that you do and everyone does. This was an act of bravery. It was a very tragic outcome for all of us. And I just want to say how much we appreciate public safety that the police provides to us in this community. Thank you.
We have any other comments from council tonight? Seeing none, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First is council members Green and Thomas for Sustainability Commission.
The Sustainability Commission met a week ago Monday and we had, as I indicated earlier, a presentation by Banks Floodman to go over the residents on Rock Creek Phase Two information, especially in this particular venue as it relates to sustainable practices and are the rating under the sustainable principles. And people were very encouraged by that and they asked him a lot of questions. So the dog park was really a hit, three to 4,000 square feet for a dog park, and that was really good. And it looks like the community at large, if you're walking along the trail, can use that dog park as well. Secondly, I gave an update on where we are. I sit on the Solid Waste Commission for Johnson County and we met last week or last month at the new recycling facility at 105th and Maston. And three people from Johnson County are hired to run that. They collect things, they distribute things. One of the things they do is paint. So they collect paint from all parts of the community and they redo them into five-gallon drums. There is brown, white, and Johnson County beige. You can purchase those through them and they have a whole list of people that are waiting for paint. But with three employees working there, they do an array of wonderful things. And it was a great opportunity. If you ever get a chance, go by and see that. That was it.
Anything, Deb?
Yeah, I'll just add, I was in Florida on Monday, so I couldn't be there. Thank you, Debbie, for that update. I will add, we have a climate action task force meeting coming up this Monday at 12 o'clock noon. We also have the Climate Action KC Climate Summit coming up on Saturday, September 9th. For, I know that the city is supporting and there's some tickets that come with that. So if you haven't gotten registered for that, make sure to do it. Also for the general public, the event is almost sold out, so get your tickets.
All right, thank you. Next is council members Loudon and Reherd for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
We have not met since our last meeting. We'll be meeting this Monday. Looking forward to seeing Sam there and Katie. We are having the ribbon cutting for Mohawk Park tomorrow at 4:00 PM. So looking forward to seeing everybody there. That's been a very long time coming, so I'm excited to be there. And yeah, I think, anything else?
No.
I think I, thanks.
Great. Next we'll hear an update from council member Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The editorial board will next meet on August 30th at noon and I'll look forward to providing my update at the next legislative meeting after that.
Great. And finally, we have council member Josie with the Family Adoption Committee.
Thanks, Mayor. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the July meeting due to family illness, but I've been working with Penn on some, some ideas that the, that the board requested. Some ideas just for sort of streamlining and optimizing operations, but I've also been looking into. Some ideas just for sort of streamlining and optimizing operations, but I've also been looking into how we can increase our web and email presence. And maybe utilize something like an Amazon wishlist or more kind of online engagement for that, for that effort this season. Penn and I will keep in touch on that and I'll give you a better update after the next meeting.
Great. Next, we already did my report and appointments, so we will move into our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have any items you would like to share with the city council tonight?
Uploaded to the packet this afternoon and shared with you, Robin emailed out, we have a project status update. We thought we would try to do these quarterly when we started this a little more than a year ago. And I think you can see just from the volume of what gets included, it was a lot of work to keep up with it on a quarterly basis. And so we're going to transition and try kind of mid-year and we're a little bit past a true technical mid-year. And I'm not going to go over the report. It is out there. We will certainly make it available and sort of highlight that on, on the website. But I just want to hit a couple of key things. I'm always, and I don't know, one of these days I'll stop being surprised. But when I look at the list of things that we've been able to accomplish as a team and as an organization. Really in, in the first half plus of the year, it's, it, it's great and it's mind boggling. And I wonder how we're all standing sometimes at, at the end of the day. So, you know, we really try to go across the entire organization, across all departments and at all levels within the departments. Because we know that it really takes the effort and the commitment of everybody in this organization. To, to do the things that we do. So lots of things there, lots of planning activity. Building permitting and inspection activity kind of noted there. Neighborhood, some information on the neighborhood assistance programs and where we are year to date with that. New businesses, which I know Robin will touch on here just in a little bit, kind of code enforcement statistics. You all are aware of some, of some more significant code enforcement cases that we've handled in the first part of twenty twenty-three. Those are sort of detailed there. Your comparison of parks recreation mid-year revenues. And we'll get a more complete picture of that September or, or October. Do you want to come back with your camp and pool updates? October. So we'll come back and share that information with you. Things are trending in the right direction. I think particularly, I don't know if you, like me, are noticing the attention. You can tell someone's paying more attention in our outdoor parks. Taylor does a phenomenal job. He had some seasonal help. I think most of them have gone back to school now. So we'll keep working on that. But extensive list of the things that have been done out in the parks, also our public works projects and activities. And I really particularly appreciated Brent sharing some, you know, statistics for our staff in terms of just citizen requests. That have been responded to right away permits. I think some of those things that we haven't always tracked and some of these other status updates. So I was thrilled to be able to include those here. And we also included then, so we've got the memo, then we've got the matrix for some of the larger scale projects. That's been updated. You have a chance to read through that. Then we have our analytics from social media and our website, police department statistics, which we're still in the process of revising. The chief and the mayor and I met recently to kind of talk about maybe some longer term goals and objectives and how to maybe tie some narrative periodically. To the, to the reports. I know there was a training. The reporting software has transitioned again and there was a training session this last week, but because of staffing issues and some of the other things happening. And we were only able to send one individual to that. So we're, we're working on that. But that's an ongoing dialogue that we want to have about how do we, how do we help you understand or use the, the statistics there? Or in any department. Also some statistics on our mental health co-responder program. And so I would be happy this evening or at any point in the future to answer questions you might have about the status of various projects. But it's a long list and we're headed into the last half of the year with a list about.
Any questions for Laura on that? Yeah, Ken then Debbie?
I've had some requests and, and I don't know which department it really falls under. Vegetation, overgrowth. I know that some of it is responsibility of a resident. Some may be responsibility of parks and trails system. But blind spots that are occurring due to vegetation that's blocking the view. Particularly on Lamar, I've heard comments about people coming out of sixty-second street until Lamar. They look north and there's a barrier where that bridge is and nobody seems to be caring for the vegetation there. But also the crossing at Shawnee Mission Parkway, there's a tree that has low limbs. At that intersection of Lamar.
Any of those sort of sightline issues should get reported to the public works department. And we can then manage that and the appropriate response to that.
Yeah, Debbie?
The two outstanding that I just have a quick question on are where are we on Popeyes and where are we on the Big Biscuit?
Will that be part of Robin's update or Brian, you've got it?
Well, there's some, there's information in here. Do you want to, do you have packet with the report? I can, you can just wing it.
Just tell you, so Big Biscuit is under construction. If you drive by, there is a construction fence around the property and should be a truck or two there. And they're, and they're working, they're kind of cleaning out the old Don Shalitos right now and doing some interior renovations, but that's well underway. I think their target date is sometime this fall to open like close to the holidays. And then Popeyes, you will see that soon. You will see a new Popeyes. So we have been working with the ownership and their architect and their engineer. And they are submitting a preliminary development plan for a new Popeyes restaurant at that location. And that will be on the August twenty-eighth planning commission. So then it'll come to you all in September.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Leah, did I see a hand from you?
Oh, okay. And then I would ask Robin to give a business update and Mary mentioned the ribbon cutting tomorrow. So please join us. It's been, it'll be another hot afternoon at Mohawk Park with shaved ice. So, and then also there's a movie in the park coming up on Friday at Mohawk Park if you're interested in attending that. And then I know you will miss us, but we're going to go three weeks without seeing each other. And so our next meeting will be September sixth, which will be both, as we mentioned earlier. The public hearing on, on the budget and adoption of the budget and our committee meetings. Then I'll let Robin do businesses and then I do, did want to just touch on a couple of things that, questions that Mr. Donaway raised during his comments before we leave this evening.
Thank you. My business updates are brief, but I'm happy to answer your questions. Sunflower Lagree Fitness, which is a spinoff of Sunfire Flower Gyrotonic, will be opening at fifty-eight oh five Outlook. Don't have any more information about what services they're offering, but it's another expansion of their physical fitness services they offer now. Spirit Halloween will open a temporary pop-up shop at sixty-seven fifty-three Johnson Drive for September and October. That's where the Super Kids Club was located previously. And then Prairie Sailor will be opening a bicycle and retail shop at fifty-eight eleven Johnson Drive. And that's where Becker and Raven was previously. And to have a little tease, I do have several good restaurant updates for you next month. We have some, some great businesses that have reached out for business licenses, but aren't quite ready to have their information out there, but we've got some good things coming your way. Thanks.
Good stuff.
Okay, I think, I think I jotted them down, but if I missed one. I think Mr. Donaway commented on the question about lost revenues in relationship to our TIF projects. I think everyone's aware that, you know, the way TIF works is you establish the base year and we always receive the base year taxes. And then that increment that is generated based on the investment in that property is what is available to be negotiated or provided. Potentially back to the developer and or shared with the city. We actually are one TIF project. The residents on Rock Creek is in a TIF district. It has actually not really reached the point yet where we're able to sort of communicate the value. But we also did not commit a hundred percent of the increment to that project. It slides back. And I think that's been something, we only have one TIF project and that was the very first one that we did at Cornerstone Commons. Or not Cornerstone Commons, Mission Crossing, which is Chick-fil-A, Wellstone Culver's that development. That, that I think we'll be looking at probably being able to retire that TIF early, bringing those on. The Cornerstone Commons is not a TIF project. That was a CID. So there was an additional sales tax layered on there. So property tax revenues are being received by the city. And, and in the case of TIF or tax abatement, which we are discussing, we haven't approved any tax abatements yet. The, those property owners continue to pay stormwater utility fees and any other special kind of assessments on the property. But we'll be able, I think, now that we had negotiated an agreement that included TIF for the Gateway Project. You all know you terminated that redevelopment agreement in July. We had never paid any TIF revenues or incentives to that developer. So that, that's not lost, potentially lost opportunities, but not, no loss of TIF revenues. And then Fine, well, line item budgets, we will be, we'll be going out with the packet. So we'll try to get that out even a little bit ahead of time. So hopefully we can get that posted, maybe that last week of August. So that folks have a full two weeks to review the line item budgets prior to the budget public hearing. We currently, as we've talked about with respect to fines for the gateway. We continue to issue notice of violation for code enforcement violations on that property. And we'll continue to monitor kind of the condition of those buildings and should it be appropriate for us to take any additional action in terms of declaring something a dangerous structure? That would come back before the city council. Did I miss anything?
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Laura. We do not have a need for an execu, oh yes, Ken?
I just wanted to say thank you for the report. This was fabulous. I really appreciate it and even though it's, it's, it's a semi-annual report. It's, it's a lot of work and it represents a lot of time and effort by all staff and we are very grateful.
Yes, by all staff. I, I have the easy job. I just have to proofread it.
They have to fill it in. All right, well, we do not have a need for an executive session tonight. So before we adjourn, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned.